I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a special business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Monday, November 4th, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Critzer.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Slahudin.
Here.
And Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for the Native American Heritage Month. Whereas National Native American Heritage Month is observed nationwide during the month of November to acknowledge and honor the existence of the numerous and distinct tribal nations, cultures, traditions, contributions, and achievements of America's original inhabitants, peoples, and their descendants to their country and the world. And whereas the consequential recognition began on May 6, 1916, when New York declared it American Indian Day, acknowledgement has then expanded in 1976 as part of America's bicentennial commemoration, when President Gerald Ford proclaimed, October 10 through 16, 1976, as Native American Awareness Week. Fourteen years later, this month-long celebration was signed into law as a joint resolution by the Senate Congress and the United States President George H.W. Bush in 1990. And whereas the significant contributions of Native Americans are reflected in the 44,000 men and women who served active duty during World War II, they enlisted in overwhelming numbers after the attack on Pearl Harbor in 1941, with many from numerous tribes, including the Navajo, Cherokee, Comanche, and Choctaw, serving as code talkers, using their tribal languages to send secret communications on the battlefields in both the Pacific and Europe during the war. Their invaluable contributions enabled America to win World War II. Whereas the invaluable heritage of native communities has bestowed upon us a wealth of knowledge and tradition, their contributions to science, art, and public service have fostered prosperity for all of us. Native Americans are the stewards of our great lands, integral to the very essence of the United States. Now, therefore, I, Angela Burney, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim November 1 through 30, 2024, as National Native American Heritage Month. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the City of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to City of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. There are two people signed up to speak tonight, and one person has signed up to speak remotely. And I want to remind everyone, we also have a public hearing on the budget, so I would just want to make sure that you have signed up appropriately on the sign-in sheet for just items from the audience, and then make sure you're just speaking to items not related to the budget. So first, we have David Morton, and then Logan Bowers.
So first of all, I thought that it was allowed for members of the public to speak about the preliminary budget during items from the audience.
No, we reserve that for the public hearing.
Okay, well, I'll show you on the website where it says that you can do that, and I'll take my seat.
Oh, okay, thank you. Next is Logan Bowers.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Logan Bowers. My wife and I own #shop in Old Town. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today. We've had five cars drive through our shop by criminals committing crimes in the last year, and I'm commenting on CM 24-530, a resolution requesting Public Works to come up with a plan issuing permits to protect the public, people, and structures from malicious and out-of-control vehicles. Yeah, I was saddened here today in the Public Works Committee that the department does not believe they need to do anything, but I think that their comments emphasize the need for this resolution. They claim that they have the authority they need to issue the appropriate permits, but this resolution isn't about authority, it's about having a plan. You can go on YouTube and you can find literally thousands of out-of-control vehicles, malicious drivers killing people, and you wisely put public safety at the top of your transportation master plan priorities. But the transportation master plan and other permitting documentation are completely silent on how we prevent vehicles from killing people or being used as weapons. The mayor, unfortunately, through the testimony earlier, took the position that no more ink should be spent on how to save lives and prevent crime, and instead, the city should just wing it. The director pointed out that 99% of their permits have no problems, but 99% of permits are for things like side sewers. There's thousands of pages on rules around how to construct side sewers. Or they're on sidewalk construction, and there's thousands of pages of rules and documentation for the city on that, too. But there are no pages on the rules and techniques for preventing, for the safety and prevention of vehicles from harming people. They mentioned somewhat obliquely that I'm one of the people not following the rules, and the question I have is what rules? There's none that are written. And that is the point of this resolution, is without written rules, the actions of the city can become arbitrary, and applicants don't know what to do. Maybe the topic on that somewhat, but the resolution isn't about me, it's about having a plan for the safety for all Redmond residents. #serves somewhere between 500, uh, serves 500 customers a day, somewhere between 10 and 20% of the adult population of the city shops with us. I've talked to many customers, I've talked to many residents, and this is an issue where 99% of the residents support the intent of this legislation. They know, if they knew that the city's position was indifference to safety and crime prevention, I think they'd be feeling outraged. Thank you for the consideration of this resolution.
And next, we have one person signed up to speak remotely, it is Joe Kunsler.
Hi.
Mr. Kunsler, you have three minutes to address the council.
Well, good to hear your voice, Mayor Burney. It's always a privilege and honor to address the world-famous Redmond City Council tonight, especially the night before a big election, that all I can say is, is go vote. But it isn't why I'm calling. We have some very serious crises going on in the region right now. The first crisis is, you know, we have a troubled individual who's really hate from not just your podium, but the Kirkland podium, and this is supposed to be about Redmond City business, let me just say, that troubled individual attacked you personally, Mayor Burney, and my heart goes out to you and your family. I am absolutely disgusted by the slut mayor of Kirkland attacking you and supporting his attacks by not acting to stop it. I am absolutely appalled and disgusted that this individual is driving on a suspended license. It is, makes me want to grab a garbage can and just vomit in it. I hope that the Redmond City Police and others are on alert for this troubled individual driving on suspended license and take his car away, because the kind of hateful rhetoric he says, "I can't bring myself to repeat." It's that bad? And that's just the first crisis. You know, the second crisis is, I hope when you work into one of these priorities, you ask the new Attorney General, whoever that person is, to develop some model rules and guidance of what's appropriate to say in a public meeting and what isn't, because I'm getting really sick and tired of having to be a jerk to people, to just ask that people be treated with dignity and respect, especially Sound Transit board members and working budgers and working fodgers. And this troubled individual, we speak of, he's a big fan of, let's just say, someone who called, well, I gotta be careful, because we're not supposed to campaign. So you're all gonna have to kind of read between the lines here and understand that I don't want to violate the rules around campaigning behind public comment the night before the most important election of our lives. But I'm deeply disturbed by it, and I hope that the Redmond City Council will urge legislators to act to protect you, and urge the Kirkland City Council to stop letting Alex Zimmerman show up and hurl hate at your mayor and your city council for having some rules of decency. It is, a statement after the fact isn't working, and I'm gonna just leave it at that, because I'm just too upset to continue, and I hope you understand, Mayor. Again, my heart goes out to you and the city council. Thanks.
Thank you. That is the last person signed up virtually, and items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is a consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, for consent item number three, it's ordinance number 3178, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending the 2025 P Pay Plan for Employees Covered by the Teamsters Local Union Number 117, representing law enforcement officers. And with that, this is a roll call vote. Actually, we're all here, we can just do a voice vote. This is a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the 2025-2026 biennial budget. With that, I will now open the public hearing. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak in person tonight. When I call your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. And written comment has been distributed to the council, the clerk's office received no request to speak remotely. There are 10 people to speak tonight on our budget, which is great. I will start, I usually call out the first four or so and keep them rolling. So first, we'll have Guillermo Rivera, Jim Holden, Gary Smith, and then Tina Morales.
Thank you, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Guillermo Rivera. I work with East Side For All. Over the past year, we collaborate with your planning department in gather valuable feedback from communities that are often underrepresented in our local governments and decision-making process, particularly in relation with the Redmond 2050 Plan. Thank you for your support on that. We are proud of our work with over 11 community-based organizations and the insights that we have received from diverse representation of Redmond community members, including people of color, immigrants, LGBTQ+ individuals, and people with disability. Based in our collective input, we urge you to include the following items in the upcoming budget. Number one, system-wide signage and whitefeeding. Communities have emphasized importance in to improve accessibility and navigation with our city. Inclusive design study, continued collaboration with CBOs for development of the Overlake Intercultural District and the Marymore Village Arts and Culture Districts. Number three, cultural arts plan update, integrating feedbacks from CBOs to ensure it reflects our diverse community. Number four, improved ADA programs, engaging accessibility for individuals with disability through the city. Number five, economic development staff focus on small business, supporting vibrant entrepreneurs to ensure sustainability of a small enterprise. Number six, funding for local leadership and community engagement, co-creating efforts with community-based organizations to foster graded civic participation. And of course, I cannot leave here without mentioning affordable housing support, especially making the Arch funding request to address the pressure need for affordable housing in our community. These initiatives represent critical priorities for our communities we serve. By including them in the budget, you will demonstrate a commitment to inclusivity and equity in the City of Redmond. Thank you for considering this important recommendation. I look forward for your support, making Redmond a more inclusive and brilliant community for all the residents. Thank you.
Next is Jim Holden, then Gary Smith, then Tina Morales, then Brady Nordstrom.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Jim Holden. I'm the Operations Manager for All Climate Heating and Air Conditioning. All Climate has been operating out of Redmond, supporting the local Redmond residents for 25 years. My topic of conversation this evening is the amazing work and the benefits of the Energy Smart East Side program, which Redmond currently participates in. Energy Smart East Side provides heating system opportunities to lower-income residents, decarbonization, reduce load on electrical grid, and provides small business support and sustainability. Energy Smart East Side provides fully-funded, partially-funded programs for carbon fuel switching of residential heating systems converted to all electric high-efficiency heat pump systems, often without the need for higher user cost electric grid-depleting resistance backup heat. These new high-efficiency heat pumps replace carbon-emitting natural gas furnaces, helping reduce the overall carbon footprint. The Energy Smart East Side program provides funding opportunities to lower-income qualified residents for new high-efficiency heat pump systems that can cost up to three times that of a carbon-fueled natural gas furnace replacement. This program makes non-carbon heating options more available and affordable and fully funded against the much cheaper natural gas replacement options typically limited to lower-income residents. Energy Smart East Side program supports all climate and other participating companies as we work hard to keep employees and field staff working during tough economic times. Energy Smart East Side program provides direct support to our lower-income community, is actively contributing to carbon natural efforts, reduces the strain on an already compromised power grid, and supports our local HVAC small businesses navigate through tough economic times and keeps employees working. I'm here this evening asking that the City of Redmond continue funding and supporting the great work of the Energy East Side Smart Heating Program in the 2025 budget conversations and beyond. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Next is Gary Smith, then Tina Morales, then Brady Nordstrom, then David Morton.
Good evening, Gary Smith. I want to commend all the city council members for getting their heads around this big old budget. As a private citizen, it's my good fortune to be able to pick out one item and focus on just that. My item, for tonight at least, is wayfinding and signage in Redmond. I was glad to see that the staff recommended a generous, substantial amount of money for that in the upcoming biennial budget, but I'm wondering where it's gonna go. I think back a year ago, I believe it was at Heron Rookery Park, when there was an outreach table set up for people to talk about wayfinding. And I know that was arranged with help from a $50,000 grant, I think Sound Transit had given to the city for that purpose, which leads me to think there's a downtown focus on that. And surely, over the last 10, 15 years, that has been the focus of most city work. My interest in particular is in the outer areas, East Redmond Corridor for one, and I'm hoping that some of the money for wayfinding, I'm sure it will, can help people find their way out to the east side and other outside areas of the city. My purpose particularly on that is, in working as a forest steward, Green Redmond sponsors work parties at these parks, and at two of them that I'm a forest steward, I've had trouble with people not finding the park. They're given a map online, but when they get there, three of the six parks in the East Redmond Corridor have literally no sign, none at all, except Conrad Olsen Park has an address listed on the front gate. So it's easy to see how someone coming into the area that didn't know the park would get lost, and I've literally had people driving around in circles, calling me to find out where the park is. So I'm hoping to be able to fix that problem. It'll make it a lot easier to pull in people for these work parties. And I think in a larger sense, the city has this developing areas in the urban centers, and the people that live there are gonna find their way around fairly quickly to find the subway, or the, excuse me, the light rail and other parts of the city. Those same people are the ones, I think, most likely not to know the outer areas and perhaps to get lost and wander around King County when they're looking for a city park. So I think as part of the effort to pull people out, let's say, get out of Dodge and go find a green oasis somewhere outside, within city limits usually, that you want to make it easier, and perhaps even link up some of these parks in the East Redmond Corridor, for instance, so that they could walk and spend a half a day out enjoying the nature of our beautiful city. Thank you.
Next is Tina Morales, then Brady Nordstrom, then David Morton, then Christina Wayland.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Tina Morales, and I have worked at Youth East Side Services for just over 20 years, and currently, I serve as program manager for our community-based programs. As a bilingual, bicultural, substance-use counselor, I am also on the front lines working with our community, providing treatment services and critical fentanyl awareness to our Spanish-speaking families. As a Latina Youth and Family Support Specialist in my third role at the agency, I am grateful for your support, because I get to tell young people and families, as part of our trust-building, rapport-building process, the way in which City of Redmond funding and collaboration with us as a nonprofit organization collaborate together to ensure confidential services that support their well-being. In addition to that, I also get an opportunity to talk about our efforts for Zero Suicide, which is our initiative for a suicide care in which our integrated services ensure a broad safety net, where our departments, our Youth and Family Department, our Community-Based Department, and our school-based services are all in collaboration to ensure the well-being and life-saving care for young people. But let me tell you overall about Youth East Side Services. We are committed to providing vital behavioral health programs and services to children and youth from birth to age 22 and their families, and we work to meet clients where they are at and remove barriers to services through our agency-based counseling programs, our school-based services, and our community-based programs. We offer culturally, linguistically appropriate services with intake assessments, ongoing available multiple, in multiple languages, including Spanish and Mandarin Chinese. The needs of youth in our, youth of families for mental health, substance use, and co-occurring disorder treatment continues to increase, and we remain steadfast in our commitment to meeting this demand regardless of a client's ability to pay. We have significantly expanded our open access walk-in hours to provide same-day assessments three days a week, and broaden our menu of services to offer a wide range of group programs and evidence-based therapy options. We have also found that creating a welcoming and safe belonging space to develop trust and rapport with youth and families allows for young people from BIPOC communities to engage with needed services more effectively. We deeply appreciate the ongoing collaboration and support we have received from the City of Redmond, and we depend on the invaluable support of our community partners to enable us to continue delivering high-quality services for those in need. Thank you very much.
Next is Brady Nordstrom, then David Morton, then Christina Wayland, then Adam Diba.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Brady Nordstrom, and I work at the Housing Development Consortium. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition. We're a group of slightly over 30 east-side-focused organizations that produce and operate affordable housing and provide services to residents across the east side, including in Redmond. And so to begin today, I just want to thank you all for being a local leader in affordable housing investments. It really shows through this budget that there's a commitment to this as a foundational issue. So as you know, it's important to support housing locally and regionally, from, just strategically. And specifically, we thank you for carrying forward the $5 million of the Flexible Investment Fund. This fills in capital gaps, and it supports other needs that come up. And this goes beyond what's in the Housing Trust Fund and available fee in LEE dollars, so it's really helpful to have that. We also deeply appreciate the increased contributions to the Arch Housing Trust Fund. I mean, you all know this, but since 1992, Arch has been making significant strides in the original approach to affordable housing on the east side, and there's incredible expertise and knowledge in that organization that can, are really a boon to Redmond and other east-side cities, so that commitment is noted and really appreciated. We also share gratitude for the increased staff and operational capacity in human services. And this, in particular, I mean, there's within the City of Redmond, and then also through the Housing Services Fund for nonprofit organizations, so we really appreciate that. And so I'll kind of conclude with noting this is an impressive commitment that you all are making, and with, but with a challenge, to explore new affordable housing revenue in the future, and when you have the opportunity, and I know it's not every biennium, but when there is surplus funds to invest that, and that's how that, how that fund, that flexible fund came about, as I understand. So just as a quick illustration, and hopefully I have time for this, the 25-26 budget allocates about 2.17 million to Arch, and there's a recent Imagine Housing project that took about 30K per unit of local funding, and this is a gap funding beyond all of the grants and funds and all of these other tools that supported these units. And if you do the math there, that's about 72 units of affordable housing, which is awesome, that can make a difference for 72 families or individuals, but I think in the, and it also kind of is a simplification, because you all are doing more of your code work and other investments, but I think it still lifts up how much there is a need for ongoing investment in this. So to conclude, this really shows your values as a city in affordable housing, and so thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Next is David Morton, then Christina Wayland, then Adam Diba, and then Aya Saman.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm David Morton. So my other talk was about budgeting for affordable housing. But also, Redmond faces crucial environmental challenges that demand immediate attention and investment. Your drinking water aquifer requires robust protection as you plan for significant development. Additionally, a commitment to reducing greenhouse gas emissions needs strong financial backing to meet your climate goals. I urge the council to prioritize funding for, first, comprehensive aquifer protection measures, including unregulated contaminant monitoring, more frequent monitoring, and stricter development standards. Second, green infrastructure that promotes natural stormwater filtration and aquifer recharge. Third, updated environmental impact assessment tools that address cumulative effects on the drinking water aquifer. Fourth, expanded clean energy initiatives to reduce Redmond's carbon footprint. And fifth, electric vehicle infrastructure and sustainable transportation options. The planned development of many new residential and commercial units within Redmond's cars presents both challenges and opportunities. While growth is inevitable, it should not compromise Redmond's environmental resources. Each new development over the city's shallow aquifer increases risks that require careful management and monitoring. Investment in environmental protection helps secure Redmond's future. Clean drinking water and climate resilience are fundamental to the community's health and economic vitality. The costs of addressing environmental damage after the fact far exceed the investment required for prevention. Urban development significantly impacts aquifer recharge patterns and water quality. Once an aquifer is contaminated, remediation can take decades and cost millions of dollars. Similarly, the window for effective climate action is rapidly closing. The Puget Sound region is experiencing the effects of climate change through more frequent extreme weather events, reduced snowpack, and increased wildfire risks. Every dollar invested now in climate resilience and aquifer protection will save multiple dollars in future mitigation costs. I encourage you to consider allocating funds for, first, unregulated contaminant monitoring and more frequent water quality monitoring of Redmond's aquifer; second, climate action plan implementation; third, green building incentives; fourth, expanding parks and natural areas that protect critical environmental areas; fifth, public education programs about water conservation and climate action. These investments will help ensure a livable, sustainable city for generations to come. Thank you for your attention to these critical issues.
Thank you. And Dr. Morton, your previous comments, since you sent them an email, are also entered in the record for the public hearing, too.
Thank you.
Next, we have Christina Wayland, then Adam Diba. Next, we have Christina Wayland, then Adam Deba, then Aya Saman, and then Jerry Kroll.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Christina Wayland, and I am a member of the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Commission. However, I am not here representing that commission. I previously spoke during the July budget hearing to urge your support of the Park CIP elements, specifically the Southeast Redmond Neighborhood Park, the Permanent Dog Park Installation, and Redmond Central Connector Phase III. This evening, I would like to lend my support to a few proposed service enhancements. The Park System Sinage and Way Finding Plan. I do a lot of traveling and notice the ease, or lack thereof, in getting around other places. Good signage, which is frequent and consistent in design, is so helpful to those of us visiting or to new residents to a place. I am hopeful that this plan and its implementation will be completed prior to World Cup visitors arriving and attempting to navigate all the wonderful amenities that Redmond has to offer. ADA improvements. There is a Service Enhancement for Transportation ADA Transition Plan, and there are multiple CIP projects related to ADA improvements. These types of projects aren't flashy like a new park, but they make a world of difference. As Redmond continues to strive to be welcoming, increasing the ability of everyone to get around parks, pathways, sidewalks, and curbs is vital. The Volunteer Coordinator Position. Since this was a council proposal, I want to thank the council for this. In addition, I want to commend the mayor, the city staff, and the council for working through the years and iterations of this role, and I am excited to see a full FTE placed in the Parks and Recreation Department. I can envision the greater sense of community that Redmond residents will feel with a more purposeful and organized volunteer engagement process. There are so many elements of the 202526 budget that I look forward to seeing. It's wonderful to see a budget process where the city has the funds to add projects and add staff. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Next is Adam Deba, then Aya Saman, and then Jerry Kroll.
Good evening to you all. Sorry, my voice, I've been traveling. My name is Adam Deba, Executive Director and founder of Africans on the East Side. We work with youths and families that are forgotten, that we usually don't see in this room, but they live around the east side. I've been an average volunteer for almost 27 years working with them. So the question that I have, that they wanted to ask, and I also work with East Side for All. Many cultures within our communities, particularly our vulnerable youths, are often excluded from crucial decisions regarding health, housing, translation, services, and cultural access, areas that deeply impact their lives. As a leader in a position of power, what specific steps are you taking to ensure that all communities, regardless of race, receive the care and representation they deserve in these decisions that directly affect them? East Side for All, we have been working with you guys, and we are very grateful to be involved in the 2050 vision that we have been really excited to work with that. But we also need funding for local leadership and community engagement, co-creating efforts with community-based organizations to foster greater civic participation, because that's what we are missing. And we need to know if you guys will consider adding us to your budget so that we can continue doing the amazing work within the east side. We support them through little fundings that we have. Our youths are going through fentanyl, addiction, suicide, but nobody understands them like we do because they are in desperate needs and they won't come out, but we meet them where they are. So the struggle is real, and we really need to take care of our own. And thank you for listening.
Next, oh, council president?
Just a quick follow-up on that one. Have all organizations that have been recommended for funding via the Human Services Grants been notified?
Yes, they have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Aya Saman, and then Jerry Kroll.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. My name is Aya Saman. I am a community member and a member of the Muslim Association of Puget Sound, or MAPS, which has proudly served the eastside community for over 20 years. I'm here today standing in for Hind Al Hanawi, a board member at MAPS. Our mission at MAPS is to provide a welcoming space for all, fostering community, education, and essential services. Most of you have visited MAPS, and if any of you have been recently, you'll notice that we are bursting at the seams, and so it is time for a new space. So we are excited to present our 2025 Expansion Plan, which aims to purchase and renovate a three-building property in Redmond for a mosque, a youth community center, a daycare, a school, and a health clinic, as well as supportive and transitional housing. This initiative is crucial as we respond to the growing needs of our diverse community. We have outgrown our existing space and are seeking to provide more services through the MCRC, the Muslim Community Resource Center. All of our community services are nonreligious and available to all in the community. The property located in Redmond encompasses 146,000 square feet on 7.6 acres, conveniently positioned near major routes and the Microsoft campus. This prime location will enhance our outreach and service delivery. We're requesting an investment of $500,000 from the City of Redmond to support the renovation of facilities for transitional housing. This funding will directly benefit our community by addressing critical needs. We're also pursuing funds from King County, the state, and the federal government, as well as over a third of the project's $10 million budget from community fundraising. With your support, we can continue to be a pillar of the community, fostering inclusion and providing vital resources to underrepresented groups. Together, we can build a stronger, healthier future for all residents of Redmond. I have sent you all emails with this request, as well as more details about the project. Feel free to reach out to me or MAPS Board Director Hind Al Hanawi directly with any questions. Thank you.
Next, we have Jerry Kroll.
Good evening, Adam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jerry Krown. I'm the Executive Director at Eastside Legal Assistance Program. I'm here this evening to say how disappointed I am that the funding allocated for us has now been restricted only to housing assistance, and our general fund that's clearly through pool cities has been zeroed out. So we will no longer be able to provide funding, provide services for the residents of Redmond for any civil legal aid in family law, elder law, immigration, or any other services other than the strict interpretation of family law. I would like to clear up a misconception from the October 22 meeting. At that meeting, Councilmember Field asked if civil legal aid would continue, and you know, as it has been, I would assume, and he was told that yes, it would, that King County Sexual Assault Resource Center would provide civil legal aid, and we would provide civil legal aid. Well, first, CASARC does not provide legal aid. They provide wonderful support services for survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault, but when they need civil legal aid, they call us. Secondly, they did not explain fully that the services for us were strictly going to be limited to housing in the future. I am disappointed, and I would like that you to take the Housing Human Service Commission's recommendation as simply that, a recommendation, and that you consider fully funding ELAP so that we may offer a full spectrum of civil legal aid to the residents of Redmond. Thank you.
That is everyone that has signed up to speak in the budget tonight. The public hearing is now closed. Our next item of business is a staff report for the third quarter 2024 financial report. Kelly Cochran, Finance Director, will introduce this item.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm here for the third quarter monthly, or excuse me, third quarter financial report for the 2324 biennium. Should be no surprises for council as we've been discussing this item quite a bit as we have been working through budget deliberations. Biennial revenues are still looking very strong. I don't anticipate any issues with our budgeted revenues meeting targets. I would like to take the opportunity, though, on this slide, and circle back to Councilmember Nueva Camina on a very thoughtful question that was asked the other evening regarding our reserves and what we do with them. So I, being completely stuck in budget mode, answered that we budget them, so that, just in case you didn't catch that. But what we do besides that is we invest them. We are invested in the state pool, and if you look at our other revenues, we are currently already overcollected about $2 million. Expected that number to be somewhere around the $5 million range by the time we reach the end of the biennium, and that really is because of the success of the investments that we have had for the last biennium and that we expect to continue for the next five years. On the expenditure side, also really no surprises. Salary and benefits should be sufficient to cover not only salary and benefits, but what a couple of departments are experiencing with overtime. I do expect that professional services will come in underspent. Some of that is because we just didn't need some of the budgeted amounts for situations that just didn't arise. Others will be carried over into the next biennium, as we've discussed. They will be finishing up that work in the next biennium. From a department perspective, at this point, there are a couple of departments that are right up against where we should be, which is about 87% of the budget. Those are mostly the departments that have been impacted by overtime, and we are working very closely in partnership with them to make sure that we resolve those issues and come in under budget or at budget by the end of the biennium. Capital investment program also continues to plug along as we expected. This is another great example for your Councilmember Nueva Camina. If you're looking under other agencies and miscellaneous, this is where we can really see some large gains in our investment earnings. CIP funds have large balances in them, and that's where we can see a very big impact. I have seen an uptick in our REIT numbers for October. That was quite sizable compared to the previous months. I don't know if it's due to a drop in interest rates or if there was anticipated drop in interest rates that got activity going, but it gives me hope that my forecast of meeting this target or exceeding this target will come into actuality. Impact fees, they also are still within promise. We do tend to see an uptick in impact fees towards the end of a year as people are trying to get those in before fees increase. Water wastewater utility is performing well. No concerns about meeting our targets for the year or for the biennium. The, this slide was inserted last time just to demonstrate that often the water wastewater utility is expending more in the beginning portions of the year than the revenue that we receive. That right sizes itself during the summer months, as you can see the consumption line above and sort of the revenue line that follows it. I left you hanging last time in June. So I said, just wait to see what would happen, and then we started raining and raining and raining. So I'm glad we have a good story. We certainly saw an increase in consumption for July, August, September over previous years was down some just because we saw fairly wet weather and cold weather as well in the month of August compared to where we had been. I believe that we will see, I'll keep you hanging, a pretty sharp decrease in October, but I will let you know in January, February timeframe. Looking at some of our baseline budgets, just to touch base on these really quickly, for those that appear to be spending ahead of what we would expect, primarily that is due to the completion of one-time work that is budgeted within those programs. That is the case with environmental sustainability. A lot of that, those dollars are one-time, and she's done an excellent job executing the plan this year. Safe and resilient, we are dealing with some high jail costs that weren't anticipated. They are covered in the police budget as a whole, but this program, we have right-sized that in the 2526 biennium, work to anticipate those increases as much as we can. City council budget is looking high right now. That really is because of the pace of some expenditures due to your neighborhood conversations and events that recently posted, really expecting just salary and benefits for the rest of the biennium, and you should come in within expectations. The, a couple of budget items here, the capital investment delivery is just a little bit over. There were some services that they took part in. This is mostly our, or all 100%, the Public Works Department, and that overage is handled in other parts of their budget. The Microsoft refresh, we are going through a review. This will either be taken care of by a budget adjustment to add budget from fund balance to the Microsoft project because it has accelerated, or we'll be moving some expenditures out to programs that they rely, reside in. So currently in a review, but nothing to be concerned about. The other thing that I want to mention is a couple of responses for Councilmember Stewart. So she was kind enough to provide questions ahead of time regarding fund balances in a couple of the funds that were higher than she had expected. COVID-19 fund as well as our CFD dollars. So COVID-19 is really about timing. There will be a third quarter transfer as well as a fourth quarter transfer for expenditures that have incurred in our capital project funds. The remaining amount is currently programmed in the 2526 budget going towards tourism and a small portion towards human services. Dollars are being expended at the pace that we expected. Some were less than anticipated, and those savings have been allocated to tourism as well, provide a little bit more funding than we expected. The COVID-19, excuse me, the CFD funds, we just, in the CFD meeting, approved a very large invoice for Sound Transit. That will take the majority of the fund balance in 201601, leaves about $800,000 for 201601. We've just gone through a process to add projects to that CFD, and the transfers to support those projects being completed, and the transportation CIP are budgeted in the next biennium. So what we don't expend, we will in the next biennium or soon after. Any questions?
Any questions for Director Cochran? Great, thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. Council President.
I was just gonna wait if others had a question. One note, I think you said 2016-1, but I think it was 2014-1, just to correct the record on that.
2014-1, we'll be paying Sound Transit. 2016-1, we added projects, and we'll be paying for those in the next biennium.
Great, thank you. And just one comment, really appreciate this presentation and the work to keep us on budget throughout this biennium. I really love the way that you laid out against our baseline budget offers, and just would love to be able to see that going forward on the future reports in the upcoming biennium.
You will. A couple of the graphs I would like to change, but that we will keep. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you again. Our next item of business is Ombudspur Report for the month of October. We have Councilmember Nueva Camina, and then in November is Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, mayor. Very short and sweet because of a technical difficulty that I was having today.
Very short and sweet because of a technical difficulty that I was having today, I do not have the ombuds report. However, I will be bringing those forward to our next business meeting in two weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, I think there were three items so far this month that of note. One, we, was presented to us by the owner of Hashtag. He had sent a number of emails to city council describing the struggle he's had with the city. I think, I won't repeat, he laid it out pretty well. Some of the tone was desperate and asking council for assistance in getting the city to respond. There was one email, I'm sorry, one, yeah, email that, to the mayor's office, something to do with the Boeing strike, and that this person thought that public comment was an overstep by the mayor. But the mayor has responded to that so far. And then the third one was still in process. It was about a intersection that is growing in complexity and lack of safety, and I think the, our legislative analyst has forwarded that to the Planning and Public Works Department for response, yet to be determined. And that's all I have so far.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? I see Council Vice President, then Councilmember Stewart, and then Councilmember Salahuddin.
Thank you. Just a few things right now. One was hearing from a community member about the, feeling very excited about the 2050 comp plan. Another, I recently heard back from the community member that has large houses going up right next door and tree removals, that they had, they had been looking at prior tree removals, and there are no current trees, although they are fearful that the developer's going to try to remove trees in the neighboring property. And I had been contacted by a youth community member to address some questions, which staff recently got back to me, so I'll be returning that to that community member shortly.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Last week, I had seven visitors to my office hours. It was a hopping afternoon. This included a visit from one of the owners of Hashtag. We had some questions about the Salary Commission here in Redmond that recently completed its work. I had a discussion with a resident interested in neighborhood commercial regulations, feedback on the last council conversation in downtown park, discussed the use of AI at the city of Redmond, and the Human Services Commission, their recommended slate of investments. A note about my office hours, due to an upcoming extended closure of the library and the winter holidays, my office hours will be by appointment only in December and January, and regular office hours will resume in February. This information is all posted on my council bio on the council website, so if you get lost or don't remember, feel free to check back there. I wanted to give my gratitude and appreciation for the staff and the volunteers at Green Redmond Day and our forest steward, James. 300 trees and native shrubs were planted in the Viewpoint Open Space. There were about 30 volunteers, including lots of teens and families, and it was overall really great day, very muddy, very wet, but very fun and productive, productive day, and also really cool to see the growth of the trees from the last planting in that area. So it was fun to monitor progress kind of throughout the day. Earlier today, I toured the city of Carnation with the mayor and city manager. This is a continuation of a conversation that has come up in one of the regional boards and committees that I serve on, and today I just visited as a, as a neighboring council member. I do look forward in the future to our council and our city being able to support a future transit corridor between the valley and the light rail station down the line. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salahuddin?
Thank you. I'll start by commending the entire team, police and fire, for their work with the trunk or treat event, specifically the fire department for hosting in their space. And it turned out there were lots and lots and lots of kids with amazing costumes, and a lot of the council members joined as well, so great event there. I also had the opportunity to visit Diwali celebration, Happy Diwali to all those that celebrated, at BAPS with Deputy Chief Coats. So he and I got to tour around there. And then a few weeks back, I visited the Redmond Youth Partnership Advisory Committee and presented for about 45 minutes. They had a lot of great questions to a couple dozen youth there, really engaged in our community. And then finally had a few conversations with community members specifically around that human services funding, talked about Renewal Food Bank, as well as the commenter who spoke on the MAPS transitional and supportive housing project.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, ombuds? Press, Council President.
I had one visitor to my office hours last week who wanted to talk about some ideas around additional work on environmental sustainability and also supported a lot of the investments that, is this still working? Okay. It's a little less loud. The investments that we have that are proposed in our budget, but also some ideas as well for ways that we could make our schools even more sustainable as well. So had a really good conversation there. Also joined on a couple of the events that were already noted. And I'll note that the week before Green Redmond Day, there was another Green Redmond event, actually, one of our speakers that came up tonight, who's one of our forest stewards at Arthur Johnson Park, and it was really cool to see people of all ages come out and plant trees there. And actually, Dr. Morton gave a really great tutorial I caught on video of how to plant a tree. So gotta make sure to share that on social media. I haven't done that yet. But, but yeah, really cool to see our community out during this planting time, making our community greener. And I was also able to visit MAPS and talk with them a bit about their proposal that they spoke about tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? Seeing none, next we have committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick update from Cascade Water Alliance. We had previously had a question from our planning commission about the ecology permit and if that is on plan. That is currently slightly delayed because we are negotiating new contracts with the city of Tacoma and switching over from the city of Seattle, continuing to take a regional approach and looking at regional issues of water, making sure that all of us in the region that we're taking care of. So as soon as we've got those contracts completed, then we'll be moving forward for the ecology permit. There was also a question about if we are on plan for storage water, especially in the Overlake. And yes, we are on plan for that. And Cascade Water, in the Mud Mountain Dam Fish Passage construction project that's been going on, we have finally gotten to phase three and are moving forward, so that's a very exciting piece on that.
Thanks so much for sharing all of that. Other committee reports? Wow. Yeah, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I attended the One Redmond Government Affairs Committee meeting earlier in the month. We discussed several of the same topics that have been coming through the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works, including a preview of the upcoming update on our transportation master plan. Earlier tonight, we had a Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. We discussed annual fee, annual impact fee indexing, an update to the micro mobility program, and probably most important of all, we previewed all of the ordinances that will be in the package on November 19th, when we consider adoption of Redmond 2050, our brand-new comprehensive plan. So very exciting. We also did take up a council policy proposal related to the, the process improvements that may or may not need to be needed as a result of the policy work related to the hashtag break-ins. We are expecting staff to bring back an update on that for further consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Public Works Board meeting. We're excited to be taking a $400 million package for low-income distressed and severely distressed communities to the governor's office coming up in the next budget. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
I just have a short update from Sound Transit. Many in our community know that we have two more stations that have not opened yet, and we don't have a date yet for when they will open, but they will open next late spring, I would say. And then we're still on track to open the entire system across the bridge by the end of 2025. So as, as we hear more, we'll share with all of you, but it's pretty exciting if you have the opportunity to take a look at our stations. They do look, in downtown and Marymore Village, they do look like they're nearing completion. And sometime soon, you will start to see trains running on those tracks just for testing. They're not running yet. But they have also been running trains on the Bellevue to Mercer Island segment, which is really exciting as well. So you can't get on them yet, they're doing all the testing, but just a great thing to look forward to in 2025. The next thing we have on our agenda is new business, AM number 24-168, award bid to SCI Infrastructure of Sea-Tech Washington in the amount of $1,231,808 for the sidewalk repair on 40th from 156 to Bell Red Project. Aaron Burt, Public Works Director, will introduce this item.
Does this one turn on, or do I do? Good evening, councilmembers. Excuse me. Bringing forward this evening for your consideration and adoption, a bid to SCI Construction. It's building new sidewalks along Northeast 40th. What's great about this is that the bids came in $300,000 below our engineer estimates. Additionally, in a sign of the bidding environment, we had 10 bids for this project, and something for this scope, that's not something that we've had, that many interested bidders in some time. So looking for your adoption this evening. We have a 45-day window to get this adopted after the bids are open, and we're into that window now.
All right. Thank you, Director. Are there any questions on this item from Director Burt? Council President.
Just in terms of the materials for this, there's a project information sheet. I didn't actually see the bid attached. Was that sent out? I apologize on this, I should have asked about it sooner, but...
The construction documents, it doesn't look like we got those added, but would definitely be able to distribute those as a whole standard information, nothing different as per previous contracts of this nature.
Okay, yeah, I think the reason that we put this on new business was with the request that those construction documents or that the related documents be sent to us along with the approval. So in the future, I would, it would be great if we can get those alongside the project information sheet.
You bet.
Any other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I actually asked the same question by email earlier today, and it, it looks like the response was just sent to me, so I'll go ahead and push forward on them at the moment with those documents. Thanks.
Just sent to you.
Other questions on this item? Council President.
Actually, I had a different, more of a comment on this item. I think we all recognize the need to be able to fix the sidewalks in this area, to do this project. We talked about some of the tree impacts in this area, and I would hope, as we look to do some of those tree replacements, that we try to do them within the same neighborhood or similar area, to be able to mitigate the, the loss of trees for that neighborhood. I know that we can sometimes plant in other areas, but that we think about that as we do it, and we think about how we communicate with our public on this.
So our intent, we will be replacing a majority of the trees that we are taking out in the current locations. We're reconfiguring the tree wells and putting in more appropriate trees that will grow better in that corridor, but then we'll also have a mitigation bank as well to add additional trees.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
We might have asked this question in a previous meeting. So is there anything that you're learning about maybe earlier detection on that, sort of that continuous risk of damage to our sidewalks, damage to our driveways, damage to our streets from trees? Is there any early, I guess, is there a lessons learned here, early indicators, early mitigation, other things we can do besides wait for the sidewalks to cost us $1 million to repair?
Yeah, absolutely. Can we hop in a time machine and go back 30 or 40 years and not plant the trees that were planted? Basically, the, the conditions right now, Councilmember, are that the trees in the majority of these areas, largely maples, are not designed for the interaction in the built environment and the infrastructure. But what we have done with the street scan data and the sidewalk scan data, we have that identification of those potential areas that are beginning to show where, and that's something that we will continue to observe. Now that we have the concrete crew onboard, we have a rapid reaction team essentially that can get out and take care of these problems, many of these problems, in the future before they become even worse. Additionally, the construction of tree wells and how those tree wells get established with the right types of soils and the right types of trees in the future will reduce that impact of that root ball growing over a 30- or 40-year period. So going forward, we will be using a different types of trees than what we have been, which generation down the road, they won't have this problem as bad because those roots are not as rapidly growing that will push up those panels.
So as an interim, though, you're, I hear what you're saying, that we don't make the same mistake twice. By the way, I didn't see your time machine in the budget process.
Next biennium would be great.
But I think I heard you say that it's not likely that we can see sort of an emerging where we planted the wrong trees 30, 40 years ago and do anything about it today?
So we have baseline data that we got from the sidewalk scan, right? And right now, what the concrete crew is doing is working from basically an ink blot sort of methodology. We're starting in the downtown core and working our way out to those most needed areas, which is going to entail removal of some significant street trees as well throughout the downtown core and through the city.
Gotcha. Great, thank you.
Other questions for Director Burt? Thank you. This item is up for approval by the council. Is there anyone who'd like to make the motion to approve item number 24-168?
So moved. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Council President Kritzler.
Aye.
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 And that passes 7-0. Thank you all very much. And Director Burt, I, it would be great, we'll make sure that we have the right processes in place to make sure the council, all the council members have all the materials prior to discussion.
Of course. Apologies on that.
Next is, next item of new business is AM number 24-169, ordinance for the PSC Power and Gas franchise agreement. We'll have Aaron Burt, Public Works Director, also introduce this item, and this is the first reading of this ordinance. Approval of the ordinance will take place at the December 3 meeting, and franchise agreement ordinances must have two readings, introduction today and approval on December 3. So just to set the context, Director Burt?
Yes, so for many of our utilities that we have in the city, anybody from Verizon to PSC, we require franchise agreements to allow them to come in and operate in our right-of-way. In these agreements, it sets a baseline series of conditions and understandings in terms of what we will expect from these franchisees, and in turn, what we services and support we will provide to them. We had a franchise agreement previously with Puget Sound Energy. It was effective back in June of 2003. That expired in 2018. When I came onboard, one of the things that had fallen behind within the Public Works Department was a series of about 25 different types of franchise agreements. Public Works engaged a nationally renowned firm called Red Oaks Communications and brought them onboard to assist us in the renegotiation of these franchise agreements with many different firms. The issue with Puget Sound Energy, it's been about two years in the making to get us to this point for the adoption of this franchise agreement. Couple points I would like to point... Couple of points I would like to point, call out, this franchise agreement is going to be a 10-year term with two possible five-year extensions at the city's discretion. We, previously, the franchise did not call out the gas franchise specifically, so we have added that into this franchise agreement. There is a component that Puget Sound Energy provides numerous light poles, street light poles, inside the city limits. This calls out the ability for the city, for us, to use Puget Sound Energy poles if need be for certain types of infrastructure or other types of projects. That will require us to do a separate standalone pole agreement, but it is a recognition by Puget Sound Energy that it may be in the converse that we would be asking to put something on their poles and not vice versa. A big component of this is that we set the terms and conditions of the permits that allow PSE to come in, even though they have a franchise agreement with us. They are still required to get right-of-way permits and adhere to the city's standards and codes relating to operating in the right-of-way. This just reiterates that point. Additionally, it does provide within the franchise agreement that the city can recover our administrative costs as it relates to the implementation of this franchise agreement. This has been nice as we've been negotiating with Puget Sound Energy. Our attorneys and city have been billing PSE for that work, and they've actually been paying us on time, which is a bonus for us and our bottom line. The other thing is, we do have a specific provision in there that deals with PSE and decommissioned poles and other infrastructure within the right-of-way. That has been somewhat of a nebulous issue in the past. If PSE has abandoned a power pole or for whatever reason, maybe a light pole, in the past, the process in which to require PSE to remove that pole under a certain timeline has never really been defined, so within this franchise agreement, we are calling that out. And then additionally, we've added a provision in there that for each right-of-way permit that they do seek, we are asking for a $100,000 performance bond, which is a guarantee for the city that if the right-of-way is not restored to the conditions that it needs to be, we have the means and provisions in which to recoup money and get those fixes up to standard. And then added into this franchise agreement that wasn't there previously, we have a dispute resolution process. So with that, happy to answer any questions, or we do have our two attorneys online. They love this stuff and can go into any amount of depth that you would like about it.
Thank you, Director. You know, we have the Douchens online as well, and I see a representative from PSE in the building as well. Councilmember Fields?
So I love the line, anticipate a result if not approved. Continued operating without an executed franchise agreement is not beneficial to the city. Sort of like an argument says, it's a good idea because it's a good idea. Not real sure what the benefits are, but basically what I heard, and if you could just say, yeah, that's pretty close or not close, is that this, by having a franchise agreement, we have more clarity on how all parties would move forward under certain circumstances. It gives that accountability and clarity that a good contract typically would have so that people don't stumble over uncertainty. Is that right?
I would say that sums up.
Okay.
Probably some of the reasons there, yep.
Thanks.
Council President?
A follow-up question on that, specifically in regards to gas. What do you anticipate the differences between how we've been operating without the franchise agreement and what it'll look like to have that?
It's calling out the provision and the fact that PSE provides that service where we hadn't been accounting for that in this franchise agreement before. We are not necessarily, if you're asking, do we anticipate higher gas usage or like new gas lines coming through the city, along those lines?
I guess I'm curious if that, what the implications might be.
It's just another means in which how, that we can account for that, sorry, I'm drawing a blank here for a second, how we can account for that utility within our right-of-way. It doesn't give PSE a free license to run another major gas line through the city or anything along those lines. The provisions also just deal with accounting for gas in the franchise agreement, and Puget Sound Energy is going to continue to provide that utility to new development as they see fit under their business model.
Okay. So just to recap, it doesn't change the way that we've been engaging with PSE in terms of what they, what types of projects they may do, but it may change the boundaries or kind of approach that we have in terms of the formality of the relationship and the way that we work with them?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I'm going to follow up on the gas questions, and I had asked some questions earlier and emailed today, so I guess this is a follow-up to the whole conversation. The ordinance actually opens with a very long list of verbs that it allows for the agency to set, erect, lay, construct, extend, support, connect, maintain, repair, enlarge facilities. And doing many of those things in respect to natural gas and the expansion of natural gas facilities in our city would be contrary to many of the policy directions that the city has already adopted. So I recognize the need to recognize the gas utility that already exists here and the cleanup that you're doing there, but I'm wondering if they need to be separated in some way so that some of these expansionist verbs don't apply to a utility we're not interested in seeing expanded.
Bob or Tom, do you want to talk about that component?
Director, yes, I'd be glad to do so. I'm Bob Douchen, the VP of River Oaks Communications Corp., Mayor and Members of Council. Thank you for allowing us to participate this evening. The reason this is a do-turpurpose franchise is that it gives the city more control over both the gas and electric facilities of PSE in your right-of-way. In other words, if you, if they want to come and do something with one of their gas links, first of all, they're going to have to get a permit from you, they're going to have to coordinate that with staff, they're going to have to come up with a plan that meets with the approval of staff, and what this franchise does is to give you, through memorialization of the terms and conditions of this franchise, more of a say of what PSE is going to do or not do. For example, the indemnification obligations apply. If PSE does something negligently, then they should be held responsible for that under the indemnification provision. Your insurance in this new franchise covers up to $10 million from an umbrella standpoint. This new franchise gives you the ability to have more of a say. The use of those words is not to alarm the city council, but rather to give PSE the ability to run their business as they have in the past, but at the same time, to give you the opportunity to coordinate and to collaborate with PSA, with PSE, as to where these facilities are going to go. What I would add is that the franchise itself does not open the door to what I would refer to as, you know, we're environmentally different policies on the path of the city. We are very cognizant of the environmental priorities with the city. We've worked with the city for a long time, as many of you know. And by the way, I'm Tom Douchen, and I'm President of River Oaks Communications Corporation. And Mayor, and I'm going to echo what Bob said, Mayor, Members of Council, Director, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here this evening. So what I, in response to the councilmember's question, what I would share is, this actually builds a platform so that the city has more control over the rights-of-way. And as Bob has indicated, they still have to get permits, they still have to work with you, they still have to comply with city codes. So the thinking is, and we can certainly, if it's a concern, we can certainly address it with PSE, but the premise is not to give PSE the ability to do whatever they want to expand, enlarge their facilities, notwithstanding the other regulations of the city. I understand that a representative of PSE is here this evening, and if you would like to ask that person to respond, I would encourage you to do so as well.
Councilmember, did you have follow-up to that?
Yes, thank you. And then I see a hand in my periphery over here. Thank you. I guess my follow-up question to all of the context, and I appreciate you both. My follow-up question for the director is, if this is about defining the scope of the collaboration, I'm just interested to know why, again, the expansionist verbs, obviously we need to maintain pipes for safety and all the things for existing facilities at this time, but the expansionist verbs, why they even need to be in the document at all if that's not actually a collaboration that we're open to?
I would say, councilmember, that in these types of franchise agreements, those are verbs that need to be in play in order to allow for baseline operations as the Douchens spoke about. I don't see those verbs necessarily as any sort of threat that opens up a window that is going to allow a major gas pipeline to be shoved down our throats.
Well, that's a violent metaphor, so I certainly wouldn't hope so. Thank you. I will cede my time.
Councilmember Noiva Camino?
Thank you, Mayor. There are a couple of things that I absolutely love, and that's precise diction and integrity. And I'm lacking to see Councilmember Stewart's question answered, and that could be, by the way, thank you, Mr. Douchen and Mr. Douchen, for, both of you, for joining us, because I kept listening for the answer to the question that was raised, because I had the same one, or my understanding was that I had the same one as my colleague, and that was, if we're going to use this expansive language, and this is the integrity piece that I'm having a rub with, because of, as she had pointed out, we have made a very clear direction of where we stand for them, we even have a resolution opposing a bill that's out there. So when I read this language, and this goes to the first part of one of the things that I love is precise diction, and I'm seeing that if we do need to use these expansive verbs in there, such as replacing, enlarging, then if that is necessary, then can we also have in there the other side of it, that while they do have the right privilege and authority to set and erect, lay, construct, to have the opposite of those words? Because I don't see the integrity of what it is that we're saying is important in one way, and then if we have an ordinance that seems to counter, and while I do appreciate the spirit of it, and I do appreciate needing to have these things in there to move forward with a franchise agreement, I understand that, but if we're going to have one, then I'm seeking to have balance on the other side of it to where we are walking in the same values that we say that we're about.
Gentlemen?
Yes, councilmember, my suggestion is that what we do is, and I thank you both for your comments, is that we work with the director and PSE to, I would say, more, further delineate what this allows and does not allow to address the concerns that you've raised this evening. I think that's very doable for us to do so, so long as PSE is willing to do so as well.
And we have a representative of PSE. Mr. Larson, would you like to speak to this conversation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this opportunity. And first, I want to say a big thank you to the staff that's put hours into putting together a franchise agreement that is finally ready for your consideration after all these years to renew that. I think it's beneficial for both PSE and the city. Councilmember Stewart, to answer your question, it's not the franchise agreement that's going to really drive whether PSE is investing or expanding our gas system overall. Many of you are familiar with CEDR, the Clean Energy Transformation Act that was passed by the state. First of all, let me also say, I was expecting to be joined by my colleague Brandon Laboritz tonight that would be more knowledgeable about the agreement, so I'm going to do the best I can to address some of these questions than anything else we don't have, since this is an introduction I'm happy to take back and follow up before you vote on it. But Councilmember Stewart, back to your question, the Clean Energy Transformation Act is really driving our urgency to eventually divest from the gas system. Meanwhile, we had the same issue when we were supporting House Bill 1589, that the current gassing initiative is based on the earlier iterations of that. We were actually supporting stopping any new expansion of gas system on new construction. That got a lot of pushback, and legislature indicates that from, and embedded in the RCWs is still an obligation to serve. We have an obligation to serve new development, and as you know, there is growth in redments, so whether it's a new commercial or residential developments, if there is, you know, we have an obligation to provide gas service there if that's what the developer in the city approves. And so the expansion isn't some massive expansion, it's just that we have to have a language that does allow for us to comply with state law while we also are working toward those CEDR goals. And some in this interim period at the current time we're in might look like they're working at cross purposes, but hopefully that addresses your question.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Larson. I respectfully, I respect your position to explain and to represent your organization's interests and motives and incentives today. And right now, that includes divesting from gas because of the legislation that is in play and the market conditions and all of the regional commitments that we've made. And I absolutely am so glad to hear you say those things. I also think my job as a councilmember is to reflect the will of my community, and climate is like the number one thing. You know, anytime we're taking up an issue on climate, that's when these chambers fill, right? So I think my goal here is, and I really appreciate the suggestion from Mr. Tom Douchen, that we consider a draft that is more delineated. Maybe electric lines are allowed to be laid and expanded, but maybe gas lines are not allowed to be expanded, right? Maybe there's some delineation that we can do of the, within the franchise agreement so that we can be more clear and we, the city council, can feel like we have a backstop for the community that we represent. So I don't know, Mr. Douchen, if that is kind of what you had in mind when you mentioned delineation, but that's what came to mind for me.
Yes, it is, because thus far, the comments have been, the comments are, with respect to the gas facilities and the electric, unless there are other comments that the council has, most of the concern is regarding the gas facility. So I think what we ought to do is just, if you will, zero in further with specificity to address council's concerns and also to do so in a way that recognizes with the information that was just shared by PSE. So it sounds like these are not divergent paths and can be worked out.
Thank you. So to Madam Chair and my colleagues, that would be my recommendation, or my hope is that we could see a draft that is just more clear about which of these can grow and which aren't. So I look forward to hearing from my colleagues about their interest in that.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe clarify a little more, or maybe rephrase what I was saying is, there was a court case, or down in the city of Berkeley, some of you may recall, and some cities in Oregon and others had attempted a gas ban. In other words, the council says we're going to do a gas ban, no further gas, and that was taken to the court, it was overturned in the courts, and it kind of put a pause or freeze on that across the country. And so in Washington State, what happened is the building council then put in onerous restrictions that made, you know, putting gas into buildings almost, so it was kind of an end around, you know, the court decisions to say, we're going to make it so expensive to do gas, you're going to have to do, you know, heat pumps and electric conversion anyway. We're not trying to get in the middle of the food fight. PSE is, you know, trying to largely stay out of that. And in fact, going back to the House Bill 1589, its earliest iterations, we were supportive of that because it just makes it harder for us down the road if we're continuing to put more gas than having to, that bigger, you know, that's bigger of a challenge to reel back further. So what I guess I'm trying to say is, it's my understanding, and perhaps the attorneys could reiterate, that the city council in the current environment doesn't have the legal authority to say you, to ban gas or say you can't expand gas. You're, you know, according to state law, you're obligated, just as PSE is, to serve, to provide gas to new developments if that's what the developer wants. So that's the dilemma we're in right now. So we 100% understand the goals of the council and the city in terms of doing everything in your policies to pull that back, but again, we're in that kind of divergent. In fact, the House, the initiative, it's 2016, it's on the ballot that we'll find out tomorrow night, is precisely about rolling back those building, those onerous building requirements that would make gas very difficult to implement.
Just, so I have some more questions, but I think... So I have some more questions, but I think that, I think we're going to need some more information on what the city has the legal right to put in this franchise agreement, and what we cannot do. So I think that would help find some clarity as well. I saw Council Vice President Forsyth's hand.
I think you just summarized my thoughts exactly. I look forward to the Duchen brothers bringing back the amended version, along with, thank you, Mr. Larson, for your thoughts and input on this, and I understand the background of that bill, and how we're skirting that line and pushing the needle on this topic, but exactly making sure that we're within the legal bounds and progressing forward on this topic, as the council has discussed.
I've got, do you want to go, okay. Council President, and then Councilmember Fields.
One thing I would say before we spend a lot of, both the Mr. Duchens' resources and time, is that we should wait at least a few days to find out the outcome of the initiative, because some of this conversation may be difficult to proceed on if there's additional restrictions on what we can do as a city. So I would just put that out there, but do appreciate my colleague bringing this up. I think Councilmember Nueva Camina's suggestion around adding some specificity around either removing or transitioning to different power sources in addition to what's here, so that way we kind of think about the gamut of what might happen, might be helpful to see within this contract, or within this negotiation, if that's possible, as you look at kind of the language that we use.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields, and then Councilmember Anderson, and then Council Vice President Forsyth.
So I'm going to go to two things. One, the question that I asked initially, what is the purpose or the benefit of this? And my understanding was primarily, it gives us a good framework to get things done. It doesn't necessarily say what we do get done. And then I'll go add the comment about the food fight, you know, where should that food fight take place? And it does not, in my mind, it does not feel like it should be done in this document. If council wants to put limits on how the city infrastructure is built out, then they can do that, and they can, as long as it's within, as pointed out, state law, et cetera, et cetera. So it could be a separate document that puts the restrictions, but to try to feed restrictions into this document, if in fact the purpose of it is to create clarity on how decisions are made, I don't think it belongs here.
Councilmember Fields, you probably articulated that better than I did. I was, you know, in some ways, I'm trying to say the franchise agreement probably isn't the best place to establish a policy about whether you allow or disallow gas. The CEDR and the other state policies, and some city policies, are going to drive that more than a franchise agreement. Franchise agreement is really just determined in setting the rules of how we play together in the right of ways in terms of providing infrastructure and services to residents.
And just to add on to that, I think this, I appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate what kinds of policies the city of Redmond and other jurisdictions would make in protection of our future. I am one of those climate change existential threat persons, so I want to make sure we get it right, not sort of buried in a document with a different purpose. And by the way, I do appreciate anyone who says that I said something with clarity, so thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you so much. I like the additions proposed by Councilmember Nueva Camina, and appreciate the sentiment introduced by Ms. Stewart, who are having this conversation. Thank you so much. Mr. Fields is also, appears correct to me, that a legislative solution would apply, but my question would be, does it apply to this franchise, given the timing? So if we approve the franchise before we pass the legislation, would we be able to apply? And I'm looking at Mr. Haney, who's visiting us this evening. And a second legal question that I have for him is, does the city have the ability to make more restrictive standards in the franchise agreement, because this legislation as a franchise grantor is reserved for the council? So I don't understand what the difference would be.
Well, excuse me, thank you. It depends on what your legislation is, frankly. Your franchise is a contract, so to the extent that the franchise is a contract, its terms control. And franchises, to answer Mr. Councilmember Fields's question, the purpose of a franchise is to manage your rights away. That's what franchises are for, is so that you can manage how infrastructure is built in your right-of-way, what permits and approvals you have, and so forth. So that's what it's there for. As far as how you would effectuate a policy relating to natural gas and the use of natural gas, I think there's a number of different ways you could address that, and whether that would apply to how PSC approaches this under the franchise, I think is an open question, depending upon what you do. But the franchise itself, as I said, the purpose of it is to manage your rights away and to set forth the policies for managing rights away.
So if we didn't want to manage any new natural gas facilities in our right-of-way, would that be something we can add?
Well, you can always ask, and I mean, Mr. Tom or Bob probably has more experience in the area of what you ask for in a gas franchise than I do, certainly, but, you know, there's ways to effectuate your policy, whether it's effectuated by placing restrictions on PSC, or whether it's placing restrictions on the consumers who will be asking for the facilities of PSC to be extended.
Do we need to ask you that more formally, to get that answer?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get.
Do we need to ask you that more formally, to get that answer, of whether or not we can include a restriction on our franchise agreement?
I certainly can have Mr. Kenny bring back an answer to that question at your next meeting.
Great.
When you consider this on the third.
Thank you.
And if I may, we would work, and are glad to work closely with your city attorney, Jim Haney, and Mr. Kenny as well, we've worked with them in the past. And if the city attorney's open to that, the other question I would have is, and I know PSC has been, and this is something I'd want to think about and talk more internally about, is it seems that there are a lot of issues with respect to the gas aspect of this franchise, as compared to the electric. And, you know, one of the things we might think about is that is to bifurcate this. In other words, have an electric franchise, move forward with it, if it's acceptable to council, and I'm not suggesting that this evening, because I know we have to make changes to this agreement, but possibly consider whether, given the issues raised this evening, whether possibly there should be, or could be, an electric franchise and a separate gas franchise, so that the electric franchise could move forward while we work together with the city attorney's office and with council on the gas franchise. Bob, your thoughts on that? I had the same thought, Tom. If the council's concerned, and we appreciate the discussion, is because the concerns revolving around the aspect of gas, and what the city can and can't do, and what's going to happen on the ballot, we can make this, just like the prior franchise, an electric franchise, and remove the reference to gas.
Thank you both. I always appreciate when you two have the same thoughts, and I'm a little sad you're not here in person, but it's, I'm glad you're live online, working for us. I'm going to ask the council if they are interested in dividing this franchise, so to see if what the thoughts are at the moment, to work forward, look forward to the electric franchise, separate from the gas, because at this point, unless there are questions over the electric franchise, that's not where our questions have been. Council President?
I guess my only question is, I'm not sure how long or the amount of time, since this isn't scheduled to come back for a month, whether we could get some answers to the questions that were raised tonight, recognizing that it sounded like there's been over two years of negotiation on this whole thing, that just might be interesting to see if there are some of the pieces that Mr. Duchen and Mr. Duchin were able to work out. I think that that could be interesting, but if, I guess I would ask whether the requests are likely to take us much longer to process. If not, then, you know, maybe you could leave it together, and then next month, we could assess whether we need to split them into two.
I also have a question, is there timeliness to getting this done?
No, and yes. We have had situations, I will say, that have come up over the past two and a half years, when we're trying to undertake some infrastructure into the right-of-way. PSC infrastructure exists already, and it's a component of give and take, back and forth in terms of how to manage that existing infrastructure, especially in situations where we have new development and we need PSC to, for example, move some of their existing infrastructure. The franchise agreement, laying out the process for working together, provides us the means in which to deal with that in a more efficient manner. The requirement that we have for the adoption of a franchise is that it has to have two hearings in front of the city council. But Jim, I don't know if there's a window that we can stretch that out, between the first hearing here in November, and if we came back in March, or if we'd have to start over.
And I just want to clarify, this is not a hearing, it's just a reading.
Reading, I'm, pardon, yeah, two readings.
Mr. Burd is correct, that what is required by statute is that you cannot pass a franchise on the day in which it is introduced, and that you must wait at least five days after the date that it is introduced to pass it. So really, there's no end date. Once you begin the process, it's just that you have to have two separate council meetings at which the franchise is considered. As far as getting back to you with an answer to your questions, Mr. Kenny of my office, he's the city attorney now, he has had a lot of experience in negotiating electrical and gas franchises, and working with Mr. Duchen and Mr. Duchin, and I'm sure that between the three of them, they can come up with an answer in short order for you, and provide something in advance of when this franchise would come back to you. So at that point, you can decide what you wish to do, whether you wish to separate them out, and pass the electrical franchise, and then pass a natural gas franchise, or whether you wish to do it all in one swoop, so.
Thank you. Council Vice President?
Well, again, you asked my question, so I was curious about the timing and why December, so it sounds like we don't necessarily have to get this done by December, and we could push it into early next year, maybe February, March. So I'm in favor of that, so we can get a lot of these questions answered. This is a big topic, and in the past, when we've done these franchise agreements, there's not been quite this much interest and energy, and it's not been this complex. So I'm in favor of taking a beat and looking at this further, and potentially moving that approval date to early next year.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I appreciate the willingness to engage in this conversation, and the creative thinking from our consultants on the line, I really appreciate that. And I appreciate the conversation with my colleagues. I like the direction that the council vice president has laid out, and we, at this council, we have a practice of a three-touch anyway, and this is our first touch on a big thing and adding a new thing, so it makes sense that we would get some information back, as if it were any other item that the council was going to take under consideration. And Miss, to, if I may, through the chair, acknowledge and thank Councilmember Fields, because I do really appreciate the question, is this the right document to dictate a decision like this? And if through the course of this conversation, we've determined it's not, I can absolutely respect that, but I appreciate the willingness to engage in the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, Council President?
To the timing on the multiple touches, I would note, if there is information sooner, and we wanted to have a touch on this in between now and the beginning of December, perhaps we could look to put that on a committee later this month, like environmental sustainability could be a good fit, if that's ready by then. So I'm just looking over at our chair for that committee right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
I think the question that was posed was whether or not we would be okay with splitting or dividing it. I'm okay with that or not. Thanks.
Thank you. And I appreciate this conversation. I will talk with my director and the team on this, and we will lay out a path forward to answer the questions and come up with some strategies. Also, to Council President's comment, there is a ballot initiative that could impact the path forward as well, so it's probably in our best interest to have a pause while that gets sorted out as well, to ensure that we just do this once, whether it's two parts or one part. If that, is that agreeable to the council? Great, and then we'll come up with a timeline. So we may or may not see this back on the third. How's that? Director, any other comments on this?
Now, one thing we'll have to look at is that if you end up bifurcating the two components, we'll probably have to go back to the drawing board with PSC on the gas component. So we'll try to get a sense of where they're at from that, and what that timeline would be.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we're negotiating with another party, so it makes it a little more complex. All right. Any other comments or questions on this item? Great. Thank you very much for the conversation. Appreciate everyone being on board for that conversation, that was great. The next.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all, thank you, Mr. Haney, as well.
It was like old, old time, everyone back together again. The last item on the agenda is executive session to discuss potential litigation. But before I say that, because we're going to end the meeting without coming back in here, tonight is the night before the election, tomorrow night is, or tomorrow is election day. In the city of Redmond, we have two ballot boxes, one at Marymore Village Community Center, one right out in front of City Hall. We see a steady stream of traffic to those ballot boxes for people to drop off their ballots. Your ballot must be returned by 8:00 PM tomorrow evening, if you're going to drop it in a ballot box, and the ballot, the election workers do indeed sound a very large horn and do close up the box. So if you are planning on returning your ballot tomorrow, make sure you do it, not at 7:59, but prior to that. And you can also put it in a mailbox, and you have to ensure that it's postmarked by tomorrow at 8:00 PM. Councilmember Anderson?
I did want to take a second to share a personal story. My stepdaughter has had the first chance to vote in a presidential election this year, and I just think that's really exciting, that there's a woman on top of the ballot. Thanks.
That's fantastic. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure that we're going to acknowledge this at our next meeting, next Tuesday. However, in between now and then, we will be celebrating Veterans Day, so I just wanted to acknowledge my fellow veterans as we're coming up on that day, and just to honor us.
Thank you. And thank you for your service, Councilmember.
My honor.
Appreciate you. All right. The last item on the agenda is executive sessions to discuss potential litigation, RCW 4230-110-1I, and labor negotiations, RCW 4230-144B, for 20 minutes each. Action will not be taken following the executive sessions, and the meeting will adjourn at, oh goodness, let's see, eight, nine, 9:30. Thank you. Give us a minute to get over there. Per state law, the executive session is closed to the public. Executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session team's meeting.